Yes, we never have the option to go to e-learning and having this option is very, very important to us, I think, in case we would ever get into those long stretches. I do know that a majority of the school districts in the area have already passed this plan. The largest ones, of course, nearest to us, Chatham and Rochester, et cetera, have this opportunity in place if it becomes a need to have it. If we don't have this plan, then we can never use it. If we do have this plan, we can choose to have that opportunity. So I will just open it up to any questions for you and with the note that we're going to vote, like Sarah mentioned earlier, one year by year.
So I'll go first. I appreciate this thorough plan, but however, when making decisions like this, we have to get the opinions of the parents and students and teachers, because those are one of two who are affected the most. So how little key points, teachers who have their own families, they have to get their own kids and situate it and teach remotely. Daycare to provide childcare for elementary students or snow days have a really hard time providing space and assistance for kids to do remote learning, especially when the kids are different ages and are from different school districts. And while we try to be proactive, and most of the time, when there's no school, notices do not come out until the next morning. By this time, parents are up preparing for work and the ability to pivot so early may be an issue. Technology is only good when it works and although there are hotspots, there is no guarantee you will work in the event of altisage due to inclement weather and students won't be able to log on. A lot of parents have expressed the difficulty of remote learning and my concern is that if we have these e-learning days, the attendance will be low. Give us more days that we have lower attendance across the board, thus it creates more inequity among our student population. And I understand that our students are behind, but forcing them in front of the computer screen or the snow day is not going to fix the problem. Snow days are built in for a reason, so we should use them. My constituents, which include teachers and parents, are against this and so I'll be voting no for this.
Can graduation be moved when it is the day after school ends?
I think it'd be easier to change a school calendar, actually. To be honest, I think we should relook at it for next school year. I don't think we can for the school years we've already started. Here's the problem. We put that convention center contract in place 10 years in advance. It's a 10-year contract and those dates are set. We can always reach out to them and see, but it's been very difficult to move in the past and it's on that set day. The plan is already set up for 10 years. Is that, Mr., when you deal with graduations, I'll turn it over to you for that.
That's correct. So it's a 10-year calendar. We have it booked out. Move from a Saturday to a Saturday in June is very difficult for the convention center and that's why it's locked in so hard ahead. It is hard to change the booking.
I definitely think we should pursue changing, possibly looking at changing the school calendar for next year because even if this plan didn't exist, we would run into possibly situations where if we have to take an emergency day, then you now are pushing finals back or whatever, depending on how many days you have to end up taking. So I think it's worth taking a look at.
So I also, I can appreciate the amount of time and energy that went into this plan and on paper, I think it's a great idea. Having gone through a year of remote learning with my two daughters, it seems like a no-brainer to just pivot to remote learning for an emergency day. However, I've given this quite a bit of thought, talked to teachers and parents about it. I requested some information from you, Superintendent Gill, looking back on how many emergency days we've had through the years and thank you for supplying that. Some years like 2013 and 14, we've used six, but in other years like 15 and 16, we use none. On average, it looks like we're using 2.1 days per year going back roughly over a decade. To me, this seems to be much more of a benefit to our calendar than to learning. And as a parent, I get it. Nobody wants extra days tacked on to the end of the school year. But before COVID fell into our laps, there was quite a bit of a discussion about mental health. And even during COVID, that discussion got lost a little bit in the magnitude of everything we've been dealing with. But in all honesty, it became more important. Anyone who hasn't experienced elevated levels of stress or anxiety or depression throughout this past year, I would like for you to email me and let me know what your secret is because I don't know anyone who hasn't felt the full effects of this pandemic. So for those reasons and others, I will be voting no on this plan. I think this will be a useful tool in the future, but this doesn't help us to achieve our primary goal to keep kids in school in person five days a week all year long. I think we need to focus on keeping our schools safe, making sure social distancing is being observed, masks are being worn, vaccinations are finding arms. If we end up with a snow day or two, I would suggest that students grab some sleds and hit Passfield Park. And for teachers, take a day to take care of yourselves and your household.
I've also got some concerns about it. As a former educator, this appears to me to be very complicated about making sure that teachers and students and parents and everybody are on the same page on these days. And one of the other questions I had, when assignments are put on canvas, are these going to be relative to what they have been learning at that time or point? Or is it going to be busy work for kids to do? I'm trying to decide if it's even worth it. If it's not related to what you're currently studying, then what's the purpose, I guess, is my question.
Yeah, I think it would be in touch with where they're supposed to be is that teachers would have to keep kind of like subplans. You know, you would want them to be relevant and you're always required to have a subfolder that's got your lesson plans for the week. So I think they would always have to maintain, you know, one set of lesson plans that would be appropriate for them to easily quickly be able to put up online. That would be part of the professional development and time that they could create to do the template for that so that when they can plug in quickly and just post it and not have to have too much stress. That's why we want to make sure that they're told as soon as possible on the day before so that they can post those online and have them be most relevant in the perfect world. So I know. Look, I've been a principal for 10 years.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around this. It's like 4:30, one day.
As a superintendent, my job is to bring this to you and have a plan by law that we could do this. And, you know, I put a lot of time into it because anytime I do anything, I'm going to put a lot of time into it. And, you know, it's something that actually, if you've lived in my shoes, I have had multiple questions. Why don't we just go online? So-and-so school district down the road is doing it and they started that. And so I get a lot of stress on the other side of this. And then you're talking about how, you know, remote learning is hard. Well, if we have to go to remote learning, we can't really say it's hard. We got to make it work. And so this plan actually was really good for us to go through to create because it even strengthened our thoughts around remote learning if we ever were to have to go to that. And we have teachers right now that are doing this type of plan to help our quarantine students. So we are in the world of having to be ready and pivot electronically and in purpose. I actually ordered most snow days this year, so it's not going to be an issue. But I just tried to, you know, put a plan together that gives us the option to utilize these if we wish to.
What is the, sorry, what is the cutoff temperature-wise to cancel for cold?
Actually, it's like, we kind of use that 20 below zero actual or wind chill temperature is what we've been using in the past. We can't really say below zero because sometimes a wind chill is just right there with it. Other times it plummets well below minus 20. So we use a combination. We do use the National Weather Service chart to kind of help us determine the wind chill and the temperature and it gives us a nice little span of where it's dangerous to be outside.
And that's something that they've been fairly accurate at predicting, at least.
Yeah, they have. I mean, it is amazing.
They know that there's something coming in.
From the beginning of my curricular now, that weather stuff is amazing.
On snow days, on actual snow days, so if it starts snowing tonight at midnight, that's too late.
That's too late. So it would just be a level one and we'd have the day where we'd go sledding.
So it's going to be a true snow day.
So what if it's like forecasted to snow?
We're talking two days average over the last 10 years. That could be snow day or could be a temperature day.
I'm sorry.
What if it's like they're predicting that at midnight tonight, it's going to start snowing and we're going to get four inches?
Then I'd have to do what you just said about I'd have to call a snow day and we'd have to pivot. And we're all kind of used to that, living in the Midwest. It's never a good day for any family, including my own, you know, but it is what it is. And we would just have a natural snow day, the level one day where we'd all stay at home and go sledding.
So, okay, so if it's just a prediction, we have to wait until it actually transpires before we can make the call?
Right. These would be things that are either already happening and it's like, hey, it's going to be this deep and there's no way we're going to have school. And, you know, that's just what we could call. We all lived through the polar vortex and I think that that's when this law became into effect because some districts were out even double what you saw. So they only make up five. That meant kids really lost a lot of days of instruction. We were fortunate and only really lost just one day of instruction that year. We had one day that was an act of God day. There were some communities that had 15, 20 days and Northern Illinois being one of them, they just got hit a lot harder. And so that's why this law was put into effect. It's my job to bring a plan to you and for this board to vote on it after it's been approved by the SCA leadership. And that's kind of where I'm at right now, bringing it forward to you. I'm sorry, Buffy?
I'm sorry, I'm not getting it.
No, I just wanted to clarify something. So the concept of remote learning, you know, we've all lived through it. And I'm on record that I think that we should be able to accommodate remote learners, but in a method that ISB hasn't really allowed us to right now. And so as far as, as far as I know, this plan is, we're only speaking to emergency days. So we're not talking about this plan.
We are. But it really informed our thinking and this plan was summer for you.
Right. So as far as parts of this plan, being able to be prepared for potential remote learning down the road, if ISB allows us, I'm fine with that. And there's elements of this that I like. And even if we weren't dealing with COVID, I would probably be voting yes for this right now. But I just think we have too many irons in the fire right now for, to get so specific right here with.
I'll just need everybody to back me up when we get the other side of this, you know, voting on it. Because when we actually have, if we have six, seven days in a row, it comes to cold and we turn this plan down, we do not have the option. It has to be voted on before September 1st. That's why we called the special board meeting. And we're, you know, it was waived last year. We did not have to vote on it last year because we were in our situation, but we do this.
And so then the worst case we're talking about there is tacking days on to the end of the year, which would be running into the contract we have for graduation. And that's.
That's not the only reason, you know, why we brought this plan forward though. It's just by law, we can offer it and we wanted to give you the option to vote on it so that we could have that option in our back pocket. We could also say that every day is a level one and not ever get there. So that's kind of.
I think that we ought to have the option, because.
That's what I'm asking for.
I think that the attendance is going to be down after graduation. My family's got vacation plans, so we're not going to be here anyway. So I think we need that option.
Buffy's been waiting.
That's okay. I, I, my patience is, patience is a virtue, I'm good. So I had 1,001 questions before I walked into this meeting, and you answered many of them with your presentation and with what you provided for, so I do appreciate that. And I know that you all have sat down, wrapped your brain around it, and, you know, did some pieces and, you know, put puzzle pieces together, which is not easy. I have, you know, when we did, when the district went to remote learning, and I was not at the board at the time, we, we identified pretty fairly quickly that there were some inequity issues, that we had issues with hotspots and internet and all those kinds of things that bubbled to the surface fairly quickly. And, you know, we dealt with those. Now we have one-to-one devices, now we have hotspots out, you know, to people, et cetera. But I, I worry about that those inequity issues are going to bubble up to the surface again, for things like, you know, multiple kids in a home who have multiple schools that they're trying to log into and deal with. Or my parents have to go to work, and I stay home, and so I'm figuring it out on my own. Or my parents have to go to work, and so they take me to my aunties or my grandma's, and where I had internet at my house, I don't have internet at my aunt's. So now I don't have any internet access. It's too cold and it's freezing for everybody to be out, or there's 20 inches of snow, so I can't get a hotspot delivered to me. So now, when I come back to school, or school goes back in session, now I got 48 hours to try and figure out, to make up the work that I just, I lost because of no fault of my own. So those types of things, where I am of full support of remote learning, and I've said this 100 times, I think that this type of emergency plan, and I appreciate what the state is doing, throws everybody in the deep end at once, and without the infrastructure that we really need for remote learning. Remote learning, in my mind, has a lot of infrastructure, there's a lot of, you know, there's a, teachers that are, that are trained in remote learning, there's a principal that's trained in remote learning, you know, there's a, a net that supports remote learners. What we have here, although it has a lot of pieces to it, I don't know fits everyone in the district, and that's what concerns me.
I would think that one thing that we could put in place is support for individual families who, who have those problems, right? We could definitely talk, and, and the 48-hour rule is just something we put in place, because if you just let it hang out there forever, some kids will never do their work, you know? But if we needed to support a family that was in that situation, I would hope that my principals would activate and, and take a caring and nurturing approach and give that family grace if there was that problem, for getting any work done and counting them, you know, present rather than, than absent.
Well, and we have, you know, sometimes half the city's down with no power.
I would say that would be a level one.
That would be a level one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's also the scenario where I have, trust me, it's in my neighborhood. I'm, I don't have power, but the people across my street do. So it's not a citywide situation, it's pockets.
Well, we have the city, I have a reference at the city that I can call, and they tell me about the grid, and they can tell me what's up and what's down. Actually, anytime I call a snow day, it's a, it's a full night experience. I usually get about an hour of sleep, especially if it's something happening over the evening, because I'm calling people from the city, I'm calling the bus company, I'm calling, you know, maybe some of you, you know, and all of that. Daryl is a big one, of course, if it's, if it's actual snow, to get that information. I think really the use of these days is really about those cold days, because we had those days where it was so cold in the morning, but by 1 o'clock, we, the mall was making money off of our students that were, were out there shopping, and we had lots of kickback and lots of feedback from families at that point in time, that, you know, we should be back in school, you should be in school, we should be doing e-learning.
I saw a lot of money from that year.
You know, I think that's why the, the law was passed by our legislature and this option's there, and I'm fine whichever way, it just, I just had to bring it to you by the state and make sure that we had weighed in as a board after doing them.
I just feel like we're in the middle of so much heaviness right now, with keeping masks on kids and making sure that we have mitigation pieces and, you know, in our schools, and addressing parent concerns, and watching the COVID dashboard, and all those little pieces that we're all living right now. The last thing I want to do is burden families with, how, how do you deal with e-learning now if we happen, if that comes up? And that's where, that's where my concern lies.
Yeah, well, we did, like I said, we took this to, to the teachers' union, and they felt comfortable with being able to do this with all the provisions that we had in place. You know, either way, parents are going to be happy or upset, one way or the other, so I really take your, your direction. We provided a plan that, that would work based on the law, and we wanted to bring it to you tonight for your input. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I know that, you know, you talked about the mall situation and stuff like that, you know, the, and Mr. Thurman, I know that you're no longer in the transportation fully, but, you know, I know that sometimes, you know, some of our outlying school districts can pivot. I think most of the time, that's because they have their own bus service. Unfortunately, with us serving 13,500 kids on a daily basis, we can't push school back an hour or go to 10 o'clock, and hopefully the weather will break and, you know, be able to have some sort of a school day. So I think that's something that, that comes into play. Now, I guess, Superintendent, if, if this is rejected, I mean, are we in violation of any state statutes or issues with regards to that?
Nope, we're just.
We don't have a plan?
We, we have to take a snow day if it's bad out. There's like, so if it's, if it's bad out, you have a snow day, and it goes on to the end of the school year, and that's it, just like old times again?
Okay.
And we don't have an option to do e-learning for any inclement weather days.
So what this does is it gives us an option, basically, with what we have? Okay. Well, thank you. Fellow board members, any further discussion?
Ms. Amers, do we have anybody?
No.
Is there any public comment with regards to the presentation for e-learning?
Everybody works for me out there, I mean, yes.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, we will move into 7.1. This is full public comment. Ms. Amers.
We do not have any public comment.
Again, no one in the audience, so we will move to 8.1.
Okay, this is approval of resolution to adopt the e-learning plan in lieu of district emergency days as it is outlined in the plan, and I will add to that, that it would be annually reviewed as discussed by Board Member Blissett. Can you make sure that that's noted, Julie? Thank you. Whereas, the Board of Education in Springfield Public School District 186 is adopting an e-learning program district-wide that shall permit instruction to be received electronically or via pre-planned extended learning while students are not physically present in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Education of the Springfield Public School District 186 that it will employ an e-learning program that may utilize a combination of written and electronic opportunities to provide for instruction and interaction between teachers and students of District 186, ensures and verifies the required clock hours of instruction or schoolwork for each student during an e-learning day, ensures access to electronic or written access for all students participating in the program, ensures appropriate learning opportunities for the needs of all learners, provides effective notice to students and their parents or guardians of the particular days of e-learning, ensures an opportunity for any collective bargaining negotiations that would legally be required, monitors and reviews the e-learning program as implemented to address difficulties confronted through revision and/or otherwise. Once again, that would be annually reviewed. Thank you, Mrs. Blissett. Ensure that the general expectations and responsibilities of the program are communicated to staff and students at least 30 days prior to utilization. Will be verified by the Regional Office of Education, and I did submit that to her, and she approved that already. She said it looked good for all of those components. Will be implemented for a period of three years, except for if there is something that the board wants to revise or if they want to cancel it during that three years. That is it.
Entertain a motion?
If I'm moving.
Second. Any further discussion? Ms. Amers?
Leal Wolf?
No.
Mars?
Hi.
Miller?
No.
Ringer?
Hi.
Zimmers?
No.
Austin?
No.
Blissett?
Aye.
That is four noes and three ayes. Motion fails.
Okay, moving on to 8.2. Superintendent?
All right. This approval of the personnel recommendation as presented to you.
Entertain a motion?
Second or first?
First and second? That's pretty good. Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Amers?
Mars?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Ringer?
Hi.
Zimmers?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Blissett?
Aye.
Leal Wolf?
Aye.
That is seven ayes.
Tom, you're the winner tonight. All right, so I'd like to introduce Tom Osborne to you. Mr. Osborne previously worked for District 186 in our payroll department as Director of Payroll, and is now returning to us as Interim Director of Business Services. I'd like to congratulate Nate Fretz on his promotion to Stiefel. It's a promotion for him because it's a lifelong dream for him to work in an organization like that, and we'll miss him greatly. He will be with us at the, no, I don't think he will be at the next board meeting, but I just want to thank him publicly and thank him for the work that he's done. He kept us on our, on our toes for some time with the, with the audits that we ran and really implementing some new business systems in our district. So, Mr. Osborne, though, having had that experience in our payroll and purchasing, welcome aboard. Not only does he oversee all of business services now, but he will be overseeing, you know, all of payroll as well as the audit and everything else. So welcome aboard. I know we're entering you into a very fast-paced position right now where we are, but welcome aboard. Would you like to say a few words?
Just simply thank you so much. I look forward to the opportunity. We're going to hit the ground running, and might be some bumps along the way, but we'll get better together.
That's right. And he has been working alongside Mr. Fretz a few days this week and last week, just to get the lay of the land. And Mr. Fretz has promised me, and also Stiefel promised me, because they're great partners to the district, that he would be on loan if we had any questions or needs as we transition. So thank you so much for being on board, and again, thank you to Mr. Fretz for his hard work over the last few years in service to our district.
I just wanted to say congratulations to Tom. In my short tenure, I got along real well with Joe Bassel, and then immediately started working with Nate, so I want to wish Nate all the best of luck, and I hope you'll stick around for a little bit, hope we don't chase you away.
Does any, do any board members have any further comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, I visited Southeast Washington and Metheny on the first day of school, and I wanted to commend Mr. Trigg, Mr. Turner, and Ms. Jackson, a well-executed process. You could feel the excitement from the students as they walked in and all their max stuff. It was just a great, a great first day of school, so I just wanted to commend those three principals for a job well done.
I had the opportunity to visit Springfield High School and Southeast, and also had a chance to go to DuBois and, and Butler, and the excitement level is at a fever pitch. So the kids are excited. I didn't see any issues with, with wearing masks. I mean, the kids were excited, they were happy to be there, so, you know, we've had a good first week, and we're looking forward to a great year. So having no further business to come before the board, the time is now 5:48. Our next regular session will be Tuesday, September the 7th, at 5:30 for executive and 6:30.